Good evening, I'd like to bring the May meeting to order of the Interboro Board of School Directors. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here. Mrs. De Batista, may we have the invocation and pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have our reports from our student representatives, Matthew Cleaver and Abby Marola.
At Conona School, on April 13th, they had a pep rally for grades three through eight to kick off the PSSA testing. A soul assembly was held to make students aware of healthy eating habits. April 20th to the 24th, an art and reticence helped the students make glass tiles for the mosaic wall. April 23rd was their graduation. On April 24th, an assembly with Michaela was held to teach the students that children with disabilities should be treated the same and can do amazing things. April 28th was McDonald's night. Teachers helped and served. April 30th, we held an anti-bullying assembly, presented by CHOP for seventh and eighth grade.
At the kindergarten academy, they held the annual Jump-a-thon, which was a great success. Thank you to Mr. Mack and all the staff for putting together such a great day, and parent volunteers manning the jumping stations that kept the day running smoothly. They celebrated Earth Day, "Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle" was the theme. The kindergarten academy staff and volunteers from the John Heinz Environmental Center did a great job inspiring the students through fun activities, games, and stories. We also had a puppet show and demonstration from the Franklin Institute. Students made bird feeders and participated in no trash, less trash lunch. It was a busy and fun day for all. They also want to thank the kindergarten academy also wants to thank the high school mentors that helped facilitate many of our kindergarten academy events. The students helped with the John Heinz trips, Earth Day, and science lessons at kindergarten academy. They have served as great role models for our students. Mrs. Reinzel does a great job organizing and coaching her students.
At Norwood School, on April 11th, they held their annual bingo night at the high school. It was a huge success. The staff and students had a wonderful time. Our sixth grade students went on their annual camping trip. The weather cooperated and everyone had a great time. April was also a month of PSSA testing. Students buckled down and gave it their all.
At Prospect Park School, through a partnership with CHOP, the sixth and seventh, the seventh and eighth grade students at Prospect Park were treated to an interactive, high-tech, 3D bullying prevention assembly with individual response devices and 3D glasses. Our students were able to contribute to their feelings on bullying and respond to the 3D movie as they experienced real-life bullying scenarios and learned appropriate strategies for responding and supporting those who are being bullied. The students overwhelmingly approved of the assembly, and the team from CHOP was thoroughly impressed as they commented on the positive and respectful behavior of the Prospect Park students. In the coming weeks, the school will receive the survey results from CHOP, and the school staff may further discuss bullying with the students at the school works together to further address the issues of bullying. They also hosted the annual Jump Rope for Heart. As in other years, we had a great day and raised money for the American Heart Society.
At Tinnicum School, we would like to thank all the volunteers who volunteered for the eighth grade car wash on April 25th. All donations go towards the eighth grade dance activities. On May 20, on May 2nd, we had our annual health and fitness fair, thank you to all who attended. On May 15th, we had our annual jump rope and shooting hoops for a great cause. Mr. Schiff has headed this event for 35 years and supported the American Heart Association. I would also like to take a moment to thank Matt for mentoring me this year and helping me overcome my fear of public speaking. Good luck in your future.
At the high school, this premier school is April 16th, 17th, and 18th. They presented Year in Town, a nearly sold-out crowd. The story was set in a city that suffered from a 20-year drought, and as a result, its citizens were forced to pay to use the restroom, which led to a young man to start a rebellion against his feet. Not only did the musical comedy educate the cast, crew, and audience about important issues of capitalism, social irresponsibility, and water conservation, it also displayed the many talents of our wonderful students onstage, behind the scenes, and in the pit band. The high school also hosted a blood drive on April 30th, collected over their goal of 100 units, 107 units of blood. And we had the art show on May 13th, which was a big success. And before I end, I want to congratulate Katie Receiver, who's in the audience right now. She was just elected today to be the new junior board rep. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Matt and Abby. And before we go on, Matt, I'd like to give you a plaque in recognition of your service, your two years of service. We appreciate very much your efforts. Mrs. Riley?
Thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Valerie Ekman for our presentation to our top 5% students. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. We are very happy to have with us tonight 14 students from the graduating class of 2015 who represent the top 5% of that class. They are destined for very great things. And tonight, we have a special presentation that was made possible by Mr. William Pullen, who videotaped them as they talked about their experiences growing up in the Interboro community, reflected upon their experiences at the high school, and then discussed with us some future plans for graduation and careers and future endeavors. So, we have this video segment that we would like to share with you. It will also be publicized on the Interboro Cable channel as well as the website. So, please enjoy.
Hello, my name is Jeff Ebner, and I attend at Prospect Park Elementary School. My fondest memory from Interboro would have to be when the high Q team absolutely destroyed Ridley at the home meet. That was pretty awesome. My proudest accomplishment from my time here at Interboro would be being co-captain of our 8-0 undefeated Del Valle champs cross-country team this year, which was pretty awesome. My favorite class here at Interboro is definitely AP English because we were allowed to engage in rageful debates about how we liked the book or how we absolutely hated the book, and that was a lot of fun. My most influential teacher I've had while I've been here is definitely Ms. Catino. She's really been my rock, and she's offered me a lot of valuable insight onto what I'm going to do for the rest of my life. Speaking about the rest of my life, my future plans are I'll be attending NYU, New York University, this fall, and I'll be studying drama at the Tisch School of the Arts. And 10 years from now, I don't know what I'll be doing, but I hope I'll have a corgi there with me. And some advice for incoming freshmen? Joint track and joint theater. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Miranda Baylor. I went to Tinnicum Elementary School. My finest memory of Interboro would definitely be the senior class trip to New York that we took last month. My biggest accomplishment through Interboro High School would definitely be making the softball team freshman year and still playing for all four years. My most influential teacher would probably be Mr. Bowen from Tinnicum Elementary School because he pushed me forward to play softball and encouraged me to do well in high school. In the future, I plan to go to George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia, and major in nursing and continue my career as a nursing ethicist. And future advice for incoming freshmen would be to be involved in school, make new friends, and be open to, you know, new situations and new scenarios, and just have fun.
Hello, my name is Amber Schnell, and I attended Tinnicum Elementary School. My fondest memory from Interboro would be going to Disney in February with the marching band. My proudest accomplishment during my high school career is being inducted into National Honor Society my junior year. My most influential teacher throughout my school years has been Mr. Dean Nicola because he really pushed me to work harder in school and focus. In the future, I'm going to attend Widener to be an accountant and hopefully get my CPA and my master's degree. Advice for incoming freshmen would be to work hard in school, stay focused, and have fun.
Hello, my name is Liam Hamilton, and I attended Prospect Park. My fondest memory of Interboro would probably have to be going to see the musicals and plays with my friends and seeing my other friends perform in those plays and musicals. My proudest accomplishment would have to be getting straight A's and getting into the National Honor Society. And my favorite class is psychology because it was great to learn how people act the way they do and why they act the way they do. The most influential teacher at the school would have to be Ms. Claire because she taught me how to be a student and how to work effectively and efficiently and just get stuff done when it needed to get done. As for the future, I plan to study more into classical languages and use that as a basis to get through psychology and neuroscience. For incoming freshmen, I'd have to say the most important thing is to remember to not let others get the best of you or tell you how to live how you want to live, and that if you ever feel any stress, just know that it's normal, and the best people come from the people who can overcome it.
Hi, my name is Melanie Bruch, and I attended Norwood School. My fondest memory at Interboro would have to be going on all the school field trips. My proudest accomplishment would be becoming an AP scholar. My favorite class was my ninth grade English class with Mr. Larson because he made my least favorite subject a fun class and made it a fun learning environment. My most influential teacher was Ms. Claire because she made me think deeper about concepts and ideas I never would have thought about, and she made me work a lot harder than I ever did before. My future plans are to go to college and study sports management. Finally, my advice for incoming freshmen is to work hard now because every year counts.
Hello, my name is Christina Kornick, and I attended Prospect Park School. My fondest memory from Interboro High School would be doing my senior project. We collected donations for Ukraine, which is the country I was born in. I loved serving the community and helping people who are truly in need. My proudest accomplishment would be getting good grades and being admitted into National Honor Society. My favorite classes are business and computer classes because I learned skills that are helpful in real life. My most influential teacher was Mr. Camerata. He helped me realize my true potential and what I wanted to major in college. As of my future plans, I want to study business and finance. The advice I would give incoming freshmen is to work hard. Studying and doing homework is time-consuming, but it's truly worth it in the end.
Hello, my name is Penny Sell, and I went to Glen Olden Elementary School. My fondest memory from high school was plying Ms. Claire in the face my freshman year. My favorite class in Interboro was creative writing my freshman year with Mr. Herman because he was a great teacher and my class participated a lot. My proudest accomplishment from high school was getting into all 12 colleges I applied to. My favorite teacher would be Ms. Claire because she was the wisest woman I know and taught me how to be a better student. My future goals are to go to Drexel University to major in finance or accounting and do the five-year three-co-op program. My advice to freshmen is to pay attention to your grades and try and get the best grade you can.
Hi, my name is David Barnett, and I attended Glen Olden Elementary School. My fondest memory from Interboro would be when I broke the scoring record in girls' lacrosse. My proudest accomplishment during my high school career would be remaining in National Honor Society for my junior and senior years. My favorite class at Interboro is AP Psychology because Mr. Eckler teaches us important life lessons along with stuff. My most influential teacher from Interboro would be my eighth grade health teacher, Mrs. Lolliger, because she mentored me throughout my elementary years, and she continues to support me today. My future plans is to attend Westchester University, major in nursing and play lacrosse. And advice for incoming freshmen would be to get involved in everything you possibly can because high school flies by.
Hi, my name is Elena McGrath, and I attended Glen Olden Elementary School. My favorite memory from high school is the senior homecoming pep rally. My proudest accomplishment is being the salutatorian of the class of 2015. My favorite teacher at Interboro is Coach Stantz because he's like a third grandpop to me. My favorite class at Interboro was Mr. Webb's pre-calc sophomore year. And my future plans are to attend St. Feu's University and major in math.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Stillpage, and I attended Prospect Park Elementary. My fondest moment of Interboro would be when Mr. Eckler told us to say what came to our head when he said the word "mother," and my first response was "blueberries," and I got some pretty weird looks. My proudest accomplishment of Interboro was that I got distinguished honor roll just about every marking period. My most influential teacher would be Mr. Eckler because I feel like I learned a lot in AP Psych and I can use in everyday life. My future plans are to go to college and become either a graphic designer or an architect. And my advice to incoming freshmen would be to join all the different clubs and sports offered here at Interboro. I regret not being more involved.
Hi, my name is Kelly Quang, and I'm from Norwood Elementary School. My favorite, my fondest memory from Interboro High School would probably have to be hurdling in the 300 hurdles and tripping over the last one, leaving a gashing wound to my knee. My proudest accomplishment during my time here at Interboro is winning the second-place medal in the bowling ball toothpick tower for Physics Olympics. My favorite class at Interboro was public speaking because it really put me out of my comfort zone and helped me express myself in front of other people. My most influential teacher at Interboro was Mr. McCriello because he was always enthusiastic whether it be first period or ninth period throughout the day. My future plans involve going to Drexel for five years. And my advice for incoming freshmen is to not procrastinate in any of your schoolwork because you can't really do things in one night.
Hello, my name is Erin Goodworth, and I attend Interboro High School. My fondest memory with Interboro would be the first time I went to the beach meet with the cross-country team. My proudest accomplishment is becoming an AP scholar, and hopefully I'll add distinction to that title in July when we get the scores. My favorite class was honors pre-calc freshman year, or junior year with Mr. Flynn because he made every class very interesting. My most influential teacher was Mr. McGrady. I had him as a coach and as a teacher, and he taught me endurance and supported me since the day I met him. Next year, I'll be studying biology at Newman University. And I know it's cliche, but for any incoming freshman, challenge yourself. Let's take the harder classes, raise your GPA, you won't regret it.
Hello, my name is Kelvin Liu, and I attended Interboro High School. My fondest memory from Interboro would be when I attended the Electric Lights Parade at Disney World in the IHS marching band. My proudest accomplishment during Interboro High School career is actually building an electric car in my further studies class for Physics Olympics that actually worked. My favorite class at IHS is AP Physics because I love the science and the mathematics behind it. My most influential teacher from Interboro would be Ms. Claire because even though she's a social studies teacher, she's always provided me with a lot of help and wisdom, even no matter what the subject matter was, whether it was science, math, or anything I did. My future plans is to attend and finish college and study electrical engineering, where I hope to get a job. My advice for incoming freshmen would probably be to do as much as you can, even if you just, and explore a lot of things, especially things that you probably wouldn't consider yourself doing because you don't know what kind of things you'll end up loving and what kind of sports or activities that could actually really interest you and influence what you want to do.
Hello, my name is Kelly Navikas, and I attend Prospect Park School. My fondest memory in Interboro would probably have to be during my freshman year when the entire debate and speech team had to cram into the small bus. Well, I don't know if you call it our fondest memory, but it was definitely the most memorable. My proudest accomplishment during high school would probably have to be PMEA and all the festivals with that. Meeting all those bright and talented students was absolutely fantastic, and making lifelong friendships was absolutely a blast. My favorite class at IHS would have to be AP Government with Mr. Siroka. I love learning about government, and because of that, I plan to major in political science. My most influential teacher in IHS would have to be Ms. Claire. Not only has she made me a greater writer and student, but she's also made me a better person. And because of her, I plan to attend Wellesley College this coming fall to major in political science. Advice for incoming freshmen would have to be stay organized and write everything down that you have to do, and especially get an agenda book. And make sure you do things in a timely manner, especially research papers and problem sets because you do not want to be up the entire night before to do that because, believe it or not, sleep's actually pretty great. And that's it, thank you.
On behalf of the teachers from the kindergarten academy, the community schools, and the high school, we are very, very proud of your accomplishments, and we are here to celebrate you tonight. We have a token of our appreciation as a honor for all that you have done from the Board of School Directors and the administrators. We have certificates as well as these beautiful shirts from the Friends of Interboro, and I have to recognize Ms. Claire Riley, who is with us tonight, who has graciously donated these shirts. In just a few short weeks, you will proudly wear them, and they are Buck alumni shirts. So, you can wear that, take that with you to college, and be very proud of where you've come from. So, we'd like to recognize these students. If you would come up, receive your certificate and t-shirt, and our audience can applaud you as they should. We have Ms. Kelly Navikas, Elena McGrath, Ann Schnell, Kelvin Liu, Kelly Quang, Christina Kornick, Melanie Bruch, Samantha Barnett, Jeffrey Ebner, Liam Hamilton, Jeremy Stillwell Page, Miranda Baylor, Penny Sell, and Erin Goodworth. These students represent a sampling of the fine scholars, athletes, and community service volunteers that we have at the Interboro High School. We are extremely proud of you, are fortunate to have provided you with your education, and thank your parents for all of the hard work they do behind the scenes to make you who you are today. Congratulations and good luck. Students and your families, if you would like to stay, you're free to, or you're free to go. And I know you have a lot of final exams and studying to finish up with for your courses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ekman. Oh, great, thank you, nicely done. Mrs. De Batista, can we, do we have anybody for public comments this evening?
Yes, first public comment, Mr. Zerbi Dobie.
Zerdy Dobie Tinnicum. The number 24, which is your budget. And relates to it, what is the status of the contracts, negotiations with the different labor groups that you have not yet reached? And where are they in that budget? Are they just being, going to be paid the same rate that they are? Is that how you budgeted for that, or?
It is status quo. That's how we handle contracts that have not been negotiated and approved. So, that's how we budget for the next year.
What is the status of those different?
The status is that...
How many, how many meetings have you had with them?
With each of the unions?
Yes.
I couldn't tell you that, but I know that we have been meeting, at least for the past year, for both of them, and a little bit longer for the support personnel.
Well, I think that you should be more open with the public since you did have your negotiation contracts with the teachers resolved earlier that these groups need to have theirs resolved also.
I agree with you.
Now, your budget calls for a 1.5 increase.
Correct.
At the finance meeting, I asked you if the Federal Express improvements, $15 million, were included in the budget?
Calculations, yes, they were.
They are. And so, I also, you were also asked about the airport agreement, which you, which was recently agreed to. So, in this agreement, which is with the airport, you said, it says here that you are going to have, prior to September 1st of each year, you're going to receive a portion of 1.86 million, one portion of 1.864 million dollars, which is divided between the three.
May I correct in terms of the verb? We certainly hope to have that money. But as I mentioned last meeting, last year in May, we were also believed that the settlement had gone through. Last month, we met. To date, we have not received any funds.
Well, the manner in which you went to get this thing signed, you went to the airport on April 22nd, Wednesday, right? Isn't that true?
Sure.
Yeah, well, Tinnicum Township rented a limousine to take the people from Tinnicum there.
We did not, let me assure our people, we did not.
Well, I know that you didn't, but I'm just saying Tinnicum Township rented a limousine to take them from Tinnicum to the airport to get this done. Now, there's no doubt that the city of Philadelphia will be providing this money, and so it should definitely be in the, this budget.
Mr. Dobie, we do not have the money, therefore it is not in the budget. We do not operate like that.
Well, let me give you a hint. You're going to send out the tax bills on, in July.
Yes, we are.
You don't have our money, but you want us, you're sending us the bill, right?
Yes, but no, we will not do that.
Yeah, and if we don't pay it, you'll sell our houses out from under us, right?
I don't think so, but...
You don't think so? Well, then, let me, let me tell you about the sheriff's sale that you're, that are listed in the Daily Times from time to time.
Mr. Dobie, can we have the business at hand that deals with Interboro School Board?
This is business at hand. I just told you that if you're not calculating it, you should be because it's, it's more than a done deal.
And if we had calculated it last year, we would have been at a $620,000 deficit because we would not have gotten the funds that we thought we were going to get May of last year.
President Hager, is this your signature on this page?
It certainly is, but I'm still telling you, we receive no money.
This is a binding agreement. Now, if you want to do two parallel budgets, that might be acceptable, but...
To the state, it is not.
Mrs. Hager, also, I'd like to remind you...
Mrs. Hager, also, I'd like to remind you, pardon me, that this deal is also pending FAA approval, which has not been granted yet, so we still are awaiting that.
Well, the capacity enhancement program part of that, the, whether, whether that deal is, you know...
Correct.
That's only a part of it, that's not the whole entire agreement.
That's the major part of it. That's where we would get the funding, the yearly funding.
Well, that funding is from the tax, the, the, those properties that are going to be, that were, that you had at the airport, that were, they weren't ones that are now going to be taken or used for the capacity enhancement program, they're additional properties, right? Well, that's what the agreement says.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying that, and for these people, whether, in their negotiations, they should stand firm for any kind of increase, at least a 2%, or 3% per year increase. And my representative, Mr. Eckert, I urge you to support that. And with this budget here, you need to find out about this, the airport and the funds that are going to be coming from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobie.
Next for public comment, and I apologize if I mispronounce the last name, Ms. Diane Coin.
I don't know why that G's in there either, it's Coin. My name is Diane Coin and I live in Prospect Park and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the I E S P bargaining members. We have been without a contract and no pay increase for three years and although we agreed to certain items and language in this contract, we, the members of the I E S P, have voted no to ratify this contract. We cannot accept the pennies on the dollar you have offered us as a raise. There are new employees hired into district, into the district with a pay rate of only a few dollars difference than some of us with 20 years plus employment. For those of you who think we are just moms working a part-time job, let me explain who we are. We are women and men, widowers and single parents. Some of us work more than one job to support our families. We are caring for elderly parents and children with special needs and of course, our own medical issues. Throughout the school year, we purchase items for our students, whether it be for a holiday or special event. We donate canned goods, coats, toys and give money for Jeans Day as well as bridal and baby showers. We give because we are caring individuals who support our schools and communities, community. As the state requires more from our school districts and curriculum standards change, so do our daily, our daily tasks and duties. We don't receive extra money for additional tasks performed by us on a daily basis. Eighty percent of us, our members, are taxpayers in this district. With the money coming in from the airport settlement, most likely, and the numerous retirees this year, there will be funds available to give us a pay increase that we deserve. Please reconsider the value of our job positions when you go back to the bargaining table. We are hardworking, dedicated, dependable and compassionate employees of the Innerboro School District. We are Buck pride. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment, Mrs. Coin. We, this board realizes the sacrifices, the dedication that our support personnel puts in every day with our kids. We appreciate that. We know how valuable you are to our schools and to our students. We are very anxious to settle this to both parties' satisfaction and we will work very hard to do that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Next for public comment, Elaine Wasikinas.
Elaine Wasikinas Norwood. We deserve a fair contract. We support this district in more ways than can be counted. We deserve a contract that values what we do. We deserve a contract with language that mirrors the teacher's contract. We are not second-class citizens. We deserve that. An example of this is a doctor's note. Children are required, when they are absent from school, to bring a doctor's note in after three days. Teachers are the same. We're required to bring one in after two days. Why? I don't know why. But that's part of the language that we're fighting over. That's one of the things we're fighting for. I don't understand that. Eighty percent of us live here, we work here, we have children that go to school here, we have family members that go to school here. This is our community. We're not expecting to get rich. That is, we all know that's not a realistic goal. But we expect to be valued, truly valued for what we do. We give from our hearts and our pockets on a daily basis. If I have two pennies, then one is mine to support my family and one goes to my district, to my school, to my community, to support those in need. Doesn't, if it's a charitable donation, if it's a family in need, if it's a family celebrating something wonderful, we give from our pockets. And we give. And we give from our hearts. Please, please, stop fighting over the language that negates what we do and believe in what we do. Many of our jobs are mandated by the state. If we have to go to private contractors to fill our positions, which happens on a regular basis, those private contractors get a huge amount more money than we get as contracted district employees. That's sad and that's expensive, because you know what? We care. We're here because we love this district, we love this community. The outside contractors, come see it for yourself, I, I'm not even going to try and go into details of what I see when we have guests in our building. We're not guests, we are family. And we need you to treat us like family that is in need of real financial support, a real income. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Cheryl Cannavale.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Cannavale. I've been a Norwood resident for 30 years and a loyal Innerboro School District employee for 10 years. I'm here to speak to you about our current lack of a contract. As a teaching assistant, I share the enjoyment of coming to work every day to help our teachers in classrooms. We work side by side with some of the best teachers, and I do have the best, in the state. We do this every day because we care about the quality of the education our students are provided. We want them to succeed at everything they do. This is why we are here, we love our kids. However, I find it hard to believe that I have to stand here at a public meeting to air my disapproval with the current contract negotiations. Our last contract expired two years ago. The board has not been able to find a resolution to our request for a fair and reasonable contract. This lack of progress cannot be seen as anything but a lack of respect for what we do. So, please allow me to enlighten you on just a few of the things we do for our children. As we all know, agree or disagree, testing is one of the main driving focuses in education today. Therefore, the instructional assistance role is critical in helping students progress to meet the demands that have been placed upon them. For instance, instructional, instructional assistants work with students who struggle to acquire the skills taught in a large group setting. These students need small group interventions to reinforce those skills. That's not a job to be taken lightly. Together with the teacher, we work hard each day to provide this additional support and better ensure the success of Innerboro students, all Innerboro students. In addition to providing the instructional support, we are also needed to ensure the safety of our children as they navigate through the schools. As a kindergarten assistant, I know that is an absolute necessity for our assistants to accompany the children traveling to and from different areas around the school. Again, this is another part of our job that we do not take lightly. We are also responsible for many of the tasks that would keep the highly skilled teachers from their most important duty, educating the children. These may seem like simple chores, but ask any teacher how important our jobs are and I am sure they could tell you how needed we are. So my question to you is when will the school board recognize the talents of these wonderful people who are here to serve our children and our teachers? When will you recognize the efforts of these caring adults by agreeing to a fair contract that rewards their hard work? Our job has evolved into something more than just tying shoes and wiping nose. We happily still do these things, but our job involves so much more than it did 10, 15 years ago. For this reason, we deserve to be compensated fairly. The definition of a thankless job is a job that is not likely to be appreciated or shown gratitude and you have shown that to us time and time again. By not resolving this contract fairly, you are making the point of your lack of appreciation for what we do. You can show your appreciation by treating us with respect and rewarding us with a fair wage increase. We are not asking for the world, but only to be considered worthy of being able to afford to live in it. I do want to say something personal though, and I didn't know if I wanted to say this. I make about $13,000 a year. I bring home about $8,500. After taxes, what's that leave us with? Okay, and I don't think you know that, that these are $13,000 a year and after taxes, that's a disgrace and for you to offer us, what, 10 cents a year? That's a disgrace. I am so insulted by that. I don't know who up there, you know, sat there, oh, let's give them 10 cents. That's about what they're worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few comments. We certainly do have a lot of respect for all of our professional employees that tend to our children, teach our children. So it's not a question of that. This board, in early February, received a tentative agreement from the Support Association and it was rejected by the membership and we certainly are willing to continue and will continue to negotiate until we have a resolution to this contract. But we were, under the impression that in February, it had a tentative agreement from your leadership to take it to the membership, the membership rejected it, which of course, certainly you're right, and we're back to the bargaining tables and, which will gladly be. Thank you. Let's move on to... Yes. Motion five, please. Five, one.
I would like to make, our nominations open.
Point of awareness, Mr. Eckert, I think we need to read the motion first, correct?
Motion 5.1, motion for appointment to serve as secretary pro tempore for this meeting only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to open up nominations for a candidate for secretary pro temp for this meeting.
I would like to nominate Deb D. Batista, please.
Thank you, Ms. Eckert. Any other nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nomination, nominations are closed. Shall we have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Caldwell? A yes vote is a yes for Mrs. D. Batista.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razi?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion carries eight, zero. Motion 6.1, please.
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Innerboro Board of School Directors held on April 15th, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Mrs. Serini, please.
Mrs. Hager, this month, our office has provided inservicing regarding student issues, advice on custody issues, as well as regarding truancy and also consultation on special education issues and particularly involving extended school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Serini. Can we move on to motion 8.1, please?
Motion 8.1, motion that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending April 30th, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. 8.2, please.
8.2, motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $5,274,629.37 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Ms. D. Batista?
8.3, motion that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Ms. D. Batista, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we have one letter from Gregory and Lisa Smith from Delaware Avenue in Norwood. "Mrs. Riley, we are writing to you today as concerned parents of a high school student. Our concern is centered around the keystones. We first take exception to the lack or complete absence of notification of the test results. Secondly, we take exception that our children are being denied the opportunity to participate in elective courses, which they show interest in to take refresher courses. Lastly, we must say that the state and school district are, I'm sorry, lastly, we must say that the state and school district are consistent, unfortunately not consistently good. We know that we are not the only parents that have an issue with the keystone testing. We urge those other parents to email you as well with their concerns. Our oldest child is currently a sophomore at Innerboro High School and is the first class required to pass the keystones in order to graduate. He had taken the algebra test at the end of his freshman year, which he did not pass. Our initial concern is that at no time were we as parents notified by either the state or the school district of our son's results. This information was not made available until the start of this current school year. Imagine the dismay of a 15-year-old when he walks into the start of a school year to find out that not only had he not passed the keystones, but that the elective course that he was looking forward to all summer is replaced by a refresher algebra class. Imagine yourself returning to school after an enjoyable summer and expecting to return to this, and expecting to return to the superintendent position to find the dream job you were looking so forward to would be not, not be the position you would be returning to. Would you then be motivated to do your best? This elective course may have been a course in which the child had elected due to an interest or a desire to pursue as a future career. We feel that if these tests are so important and are required for our children to graduate, that it would be common courtesy or requirement that we as parents be notified in some manner. In this day and age, would it not be possible to send a simple email or update the parent portal? So after a semester of an algebra refresher, our son was set to take the algebra keystone once again. I'll give you two guesses on how we were notified of our son's results. If you guessed the state of PA, you would be incorrect. Second guess, the Innerboro School District. Again, incorrect, but as I stated... But as I stated early, there is some consistency. As we know, consistent poor performance is not what one wants to achieve. So you're wondering how we were notified? Our son arrives home from school one day and notifies us that for the next six weeks, he will not be learning geometry, but again, practicing for the algebra keystones. So not only does the child miss out on an elective, now their core schedule is modified. If this is the goal, why have the child take any course but algebra? We were happy to hear that the district would be offering a tutoring course, but to be notified the Thursday prior to the start of spring break, again, would it not have been possible to have this information distributed prior to this time? In an effort to determine our son's next steps, we reached out to our son's guidance counselor. At this time, we learned that we were advised the night of our eighth grade parent meeting was in fact incorrect. Rather than having the option of performing a project, a child must continue to take keystones until they pass. If the program being changed... Is the program being changed as we move along, or has a standard been set? If a child must continue to take refreshers until one passes, why have the child take any course outside of what the state is requiring? Let's send the child to algebra, biology, and literature all day, every day, until they pass. I just... Mrs. Riley, we understand that you did not mandate or invoke the keystones and that you are doing all possible to meet the standards of the substandard testing put forth by the state. We also understand that you are following the state guidelines, but unfortunately, our child are getting caught in the crossfire. We do apologize that this sounds as though we are angry with you, but we must make our feelings known. We do ask that you take these points into consideration in future meetings and planning. We would like this letter read at the next school board meeting since it seems that the Smith family is the only family these tests are affecting. These three tests do not define our child. He is so much more. Sincerely, Gregory and Lisa Smith.
Mrs. Riley, would you like to respond initially to that letter?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Hager. I want to thank Mrs. Smith for her letter that we received. Just to fill in the board and the folks here this evening, there was a meeting scheduled with Mrs. Smith with the curriculum department, in fact, today, which... and the high school administration, which I believe was very productive, and it was good for us to hear the concerns from our parents. And we realize the constraints of these tests. About a month ago, Dr. Ekman and I attended a meeting with Acting Secretary of Ed Pedro Rivera. He is a former superintendent in Lancaster County School District and is very aware of the keystone testing and its effect on our students. And our hope, and I believe Dr. Ekman would agree with me, that after that meeting, we had hopes that we would see some changes with the keystone requirements and that the PDE is looking at multiple pathways to graduation. So we welcome parent comments. We hope that if other parents have concerns about the testing or questions about the keystone exams, they will contact the high school, or my office, or the curriculum office, and we'd be happy to meet with you. And always, we want good communication, and we look for the parents for their suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. I have, with my legislative reports over the last, I don't know how many months, I have been talking about the advocacy that not just myself, but other board members across the state that have brought this up to the legislators. And no, inner borough did not create this. It was the state that mandated it. And the fact of the matter is, is that if the parents have to speak up, parents, staff members, whoever, has to speak up and go to their legislators and let them know that the effects, such as what was just described in that parent's letter. We have a superintendent from Havifer that gave a really good breakdown out of a hundred and eighty days of school. By the time you do preparation for testing, testing, more testing, remediation, testing, tutoring, the fact of the matter is, is that he broke it down that there's approximately eighty days left for actual instruction. So that was an eye-opener to a lot of people. So this information was given to the legislators when we were at the conference just last month, and they're hearing us. Overtesting. Not only is it overtesting, how many times do you have to test a student to find out whether or not they're learning, whether or not they got it? It's not something that one test fits all. Okay? And the fact of the matter is, is that I have tried to promote advocating. That is what it's going to take. They can't have just a standard letter, you know, just send out, you know, a quick email. You have to be short, sweet, to the point, and the more they get at their local or state offices, they're going to sit up and realize, you're the voters, you put them in office. They're the ones that have to... are the only ones that can do something about it as far as changing this. So I strongly recommend that people with this letter realize the importance of advocating for this, all these tests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. We're gonna move on to committee reports. I'll begin with our finance committee report. We... Motion twenty-four in the agenda this evening is the proposed final budget. We, at this point, are at a one-point-five percent increase, which is an average of forty-five dollars per year for residential home, a forty-five dollar increase over the year. It'll raise about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our final budget will be in June. We may have more figures. We may have things that come in, but we just simply do not count on money that we don't have to put in a budget and then have to deal with the consequences of that. The other motion of interest at the finance committee is motion eighteen, and that is the financing for the Prospect Park project, which we will be hopefully moving forward with this year. So we're scheduled for the end of our June meeting to approve the final budget. And that concludes my report. Mr. Eckert?
GBO meeting for May immediately followed the finance committee meeting. There were several items on the agenda for that evening. There was a discussion for updating a present contract with one of the outside groups that used one of the district buildings. We had a grant proposal update by Dr. Valerie Ekman, which was very educational, on some of the grants that they are presently writing, and some of the updating of how our grants are going that we have applied for and have at the present moment. There was a discussion on a pre-count, pre-K count, which is a preschool program. The board is still looking into that program. That's still in a very early stages of discussion. There was a discussion on building usage, using an outside building to use for AP testing. The state regulations have changed on that. The students needed more room, more of a quiet place, and therefore, AP testing took place off-site this year. There was a discussion on handling the custodian and maintenance staff uniforms. And lastly, a preliminary discussion, again, for upgrading the district clocks. This is an ongoing project, one of the nagging ones. If it's been our buildings lately, you'll find out, and there's... none of the clocks really read the same at any time during the day. So one of these days, we'll get to that, but we're reopening that project again. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, I already spoke on one of the topics I was gonna bring up, but basically, what's going on is legislation to improve or come up with a better formula for cyber funding, cyber charter schools and charter school funding. PSBA, it was in the newspaper, I also received a report, filed a right to know to get detailed information because they don't seem to feel that they have to report where their monies go, even though we pretty much know where it goes. They're for profit. And also, they're looking at restructuring what they're allowed to charge for tuition because hypothetically, inner borough maybe are... I don't know the exact amount, but it could be nine thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars per student to educate. Well, they feel the tuition they should charge is that amount for any inner borough student that is attending their school or using the cyber school. However, Radnor, it might cost twenty-two thousand dollars per student. So they'll charge Radnor twenty-two thousand. You could say, "Well, you know, that doesn't affect us." Well, it does. There's an inequity, especially a cyber school. Where's their expense going? So again, the legislators are listening, the point's getting across to them, and they're doing something about it. Okay? Because these are things, cost. We talk about cost. This is what's costing not just our district, but districts throughout the state. It's hitting our budgets and taking away from where we would prefer to put our money. Okay? The other thing is Peasars, trying to come up with something, a formula, a change in what to do with the Peasars bill that is getting worse and worse and worse every year. School districts are having to pay more and more and more. And Mrs. Riley received information, she was at the same meeting that I was, and we talked about having the information put on the website so that everybody can see. This is coming out of our budget, and that's what puts restrictions on us, on what we would like to do with our money. Okay? So with that in mind, once again, check the website for this information, and again, call your legislators and ask them what's going on, what are you going to do about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Evans, the community college report?
Yes, there was no regular liaison committee meeting for the community college, but they did hold an interview committee meeting on April twenty-ninth. They had pre-selected three candidates for a board of trustee position, and they've recommended a candidate for our approval in motion nineteen, and that's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Harris?
Good evening, everyone. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met on May fifth at the Falkcroft Vocational Technical School for their annuals award ceremony. The evening started off with a fancy five-star restaurant prepared by the culinary program, three of which were from inner borough. So that was very nice to see. You know, one of the ones with like five forks and you don't know where to start with the... But I figured it out. Many awards where scholarships were given out at the competition level achievements totaling over three hundred and eighty-nine thousand in scholarships that night just for Delaware County Technical Schools alone. Among some of the winners of inner borough students were Alexis Hill for Culinary and Food Hospitality, a bronze medal winner; Sean Perry, Culinary Arts and Food Service Management, a gold medal winner; Alexandra Miller, a Medical Careers Gold Medal winner. Inner Borough would like to... Inner Borough and the school board would like to congratulate them on a job well done. If you'd like to find out more information about what programs are available at the vocational technical schools, stop by your counselor's office, your guidance counselor's office, and maybe you can sign up for next year's classes. And as always, check for more information happening, www.dciu.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Congratulations to those students, to our students. Can we move on to the next motion, Mrs. De Batista?
Motion eleven. Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page two and ending on page... At the top of page nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about motion eleven? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. Eleven point three. When Mr. Derby was asking questions about, you know, the contracts and what have you, and the response was status quo, if we go ahead with approving these... not the people being put in the positions, but the salaries, okay? That's not status quo, and I don't want to see us in violation of any contract agreements.
Point of order, Mrs. Hager?
Mr. Razzie?
Thank you. I think any legal conclusion should come from the solicitor.
Mrs. Floyd? Anything else?
I thought I was gonna get a conclusion from the lawyer. Well, our legal attorney is not here. I'm sorry, our labor attorney. Well, then I make a suggestion that we approve the positions, and until we get either a legal opinion or from our labor attorney, or that we hold...
Point of order, Mrs. Hager?
Mr. Razzie?
Thank you. Well, I don't think this is an appropriate place for a discussion on personnel matters. Status quo of a contract would allow the managerial rights to prevail, the same as they do in the current contract. So that's basically the status quo provision in any contract.
Thank you.
I'll continue with my comment. It's, you know, like I said, it's nothing personal. It's a contractual issue, and none of us here are labor attorneys, and one of the problems of not getting their contract settled is the salary, the different levels of salaries. Like one of the people stated, you know, they're making the same salary over twenty years, and, you know, somebody else comes in and makes a different salary. You know, we're trying to resolve this.
Mr. Razzie? Pardon me?
Mrs. Hager, without revealing negotiation information, I did speak to our labor counsel, Ryan Cassidy, at five PM today after discussions with Mrs. Riley about tonight's agenda, and we do have legal advice that we are able to proceed as the motion reads.
Thank you. That answers your question, then, Mrs. Floyd, about what our labor attorney had to say about these changes for this particular unit, bargaining unit?
It would be nice in the future if we could have this information because it wouldn't have wasted our time of me bringing this up because I did not realize at five o'clock there was a phone call saying this is okay.
Nobody requested it.
Yes, nobody did request it, and we certainly would have attempted to answer it if it had been requested earlier.
When I started this conversation, it had to... legal advice had to be gone. And then after I continued, then I was told legal advice was given. So what is it? Legal advice was acquired today. And the information was given to the board after I asked the question.
Correct.
Okay. It'd be nice if the board knew everything, especially when it comes to these contracts. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor of motion eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We're on page nine. Motion twelve?
Motion twelve. Motion that the following items from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction be approved as listed.
It includes page nine and ten?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight zero. Motion thirteen on page eleven.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Special Education and Pupil Services be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. For those of you that have a copy, ESY is Extended School Year. That's what the acronym stands for. Are there any comments or questions for board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Motion fourteen, please, Mrs. De Batista.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Facilities be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion fifteen, please.
Motion that the following items from Office of Technology be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. For motion sixteen, the Office of Finance, Mrs. De Batista?
Motion that the following items from the Office of Finance be approved as listed, beginning on page twelve and ending on page thirteen. beginning on page 12 and ending on page 13.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The 16-1 and 16-2 are annual motions that we pass in our fiscal year, so they're pretty much normal for us. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about motion 16? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight point zero. Next motion, please, on page 13.
Motion 17, that the, motion that the Board of School Directors approve the TeachScape Customer Agreement with TeachScape Inc. for the 2015-2016 school year in the amount of $9,570.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about motion 17? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight point zero. Motion 18, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached amended resolution number 17 regarding the district's intention to incur debt for certain capital projects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Maybe we have a roll call, please. Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger? Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 19, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve Cynthia Jetter to be appointed to the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College for a six-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that of all the resumes that were sent out to us, the members of the interview committee, liaison committee for the Community College, this person was selected because of their, not only their educational background, but their relationship to the community as well as to the mission and spirit of the Community College. They seem to have the best relevant experience as well as involvement with the community, and as I said, their philosophy seemed to best meet the mission of the college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. No other questions or comments? Maybe we have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger? Yes. Motion 20, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the four-day summer work week, beginning the week of June 22nd, 2015, and continuing through the week ending August 14th, 2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments concerning motion 20? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 21, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve to enter into the attached letter of understanding with SEIU 32BJ for summer work hours.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments on motion 21? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Motion 22, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve to enter into the attached memorandum of understanding with the Interboro Education Association for Cyber Education.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on motion 22? Hearing none. Maybe we have a roll call, please. Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger? Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 23, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached final Interboro School Calendar for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? I believe that if we approve the final calendar, which I hope we will, it'll be placed on the website tomorrow for all parents to view, and community members to view for next year to make plans for when our students are in or on vacation. Thanks. Hearing no other questions or comments. I believe we need a roll call. Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger? Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 24, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached proposed final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016, with proposed expenditures of $62,695,297, requiring an increase of .5015 mils over the current millage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 1.5% for a new total millage rate of 33.9362 mils.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments from board members on motion 24? Comment?
Mrs. Floyd? Yes, I'll, I'll vote for this only because it's a preliminary budget, and we have until June to still sharpen our pencils and see if there's any way we can get it lower because a lot of our people are on fixed incomes. You heard some of our employees that are taxpayers. It's hard out there. I'm a senior citizen, I'm on a fixed income, I see what I have to pay for my medical benefits and keeping up my house, and I know there's others that are in worse shape than me. Not that I'm in bad shape, but what I meant to say is, I know and can feel the compassion of what they're going through. So if we could keep the taxes as low as we possibly can, I know on the average house, it's only $45. Well, to some people, that $45 can be used for something else. So with that said, I'll approve it with the hope and the intention that there's going to be some more pencil sharpening. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We need a roll call vote before motion 24, please. Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger? Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Motion 25.
Election of Treasurer to serve for the period from July 1st, 2015 until June 30th, 2016.
This occurs every year. We reelect our treasurer for a one-year term, so I'd like to hear any nominations for the treasurer.
Point of order, Ms. Holger?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't fast enough. I needed to make a second on that motion.
Sorry, go ahead.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to open up to the board for nominations for treasurer.
Madam President?
Mr. Razzie?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bill Phelps, our current treasurer, who's done a phenomenal job over the last few years as treasurer.
Great, thank you. Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
I make a motion to close nominations.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. All those in favor, we'll have to do a roll call vote, so a yes vote is for Mr. Phelps to remain as our treasurer for another year. Mrs. Caldwell, please. Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Holger? Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. And let's move to motion 26.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the second readings of the following policies in categories of pupils and operations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments on motion 26? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Old business before the board? Yes. Mrs. Floyd?
Well, it was new business before we voted on it, so now it's old business. I'd like to acknowledge, we kind of skimmed over 11.26, the people that are retiring, and for the amount of years that they served us, I think it would be terrible not to acknowledge their years of service and dedication. So that's Dennis Doherty, the custodian. Let's see, Barbara Gruns, the kindergarten teacher. Hella Mayner, the music teacher from, I believe, Tinnicum. David Thompson, the mathematics teacher from the high school. James Mestridi, supervisor of technology. Jane Ann Sedd, third grade teacher. Janet Hamm, school nurse. Roseanne Moise, special education teacher. Anna Pruitt, Title I coordinator. Janet Baccaro, business teacher here at the high school. Pamela Henry, family and consumer science teacher here at the high school. And Amelia Martinelli, bus driver with 14 years of service. The other ones had 18 years, 19 years, 26 years. You don't overlook good employees like that. Thank you.
Mrs. Floyd, you're certainly correct. I was remiss in not recognizing for the board our employees, and it certainly is a very important step when you retire. We appreciate all of the efforts of these employees that they've done for our students, and we wish them well for a happy retirement. So congratulations on behalf of the board. Any new business? Mrs. Riley?
Thank you, Mrs. Holger. On April 19th, the 1940 Glenn Norr High School football team was recognized for the 75th anniversary of their undefeated, untied, and unscored season by the Delaware County Athletes Hall of Fame as they received the 2015 Team of Excellence Award. No other high school in Delaware County history has ever accomplished this. They were presented with a beautiful desk clock, which in turn, they donated to us. The clock will be on display with all of the, all of the other Glenn Norr memorabilia in the hallways of the administration building. I would like to thank Gordon Etherholt, a member of the team, for donating the clock to us. As Mrs. Floyd said this evening, we retired with 11.26, 12 Interboro teachers and staff members. As we bid these folks farewell and wish them the best in their retirement, we know that their wisdom and knowledge and expertise will be greatly missed in the classrooms, hallways, and around the district. Over the course of the year, I've had the privilege to work with these dedicated teachers and staff members in some capacity. I cannot speak highly enough about their commitment to our students and the Interboro community, and I do wish them well. You will all be missed. Thank you so much for that. On April 30th, the 2015 Partners in Education Celebration, sponsored by the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, and the Franklin Mint Foundation, took place. I would like to congratulate Kelly Novikis for receiving the Outstanding Student Leader Award. Kelly was also recognized for making the 2014-15 All Delco HIQ Team. Brandy James, another of our graduating seniors, received the John D. Unig Scholarship. Brandy was selected through a competitive essay contest and received $1,500 towards her educational expenses. Also recognized were the Delaware County Excellence in Teaching Award recipients. These teachers are chosen for their outstanding dedication and significant contributions to students in Delaware County. Interboro's recipient this year was Dan McGrath, middle school social studies teacher at Prospect Park School. So congratulations to you, Dan. Dan received a $500 monetary award and a $1,000 award to the school. I would also like to thank Don Hunter and Prospect Park for the artwork that's displayed this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. I'd like to just, I have a few comments. I had three students, actually I have five students, three of whom I know their names, that helped me at Norwood Public Library as part of their senior project. They were Demi Davis, Ashley Rentos, and Vianna Kalladner. They were wonderful. I had a lot of compliments from the people that attended. So I love these senior projects. They allow our students to go out into the community. Our community members recognize what wonderful students that we have, and it's a bonus for both, both sides, so I thank them. And I think that's all I have. Any other comments from board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, as we listen to the students' reports, there's been a lot of activities going on, and it was mentioned about the talented students we have, and going to the concerts at all the elementary schools, going to the jazz concert in the park with the choral, select choir. It's just amazing. It's just the artwork, when, if you didn't see it coming in when you go out, that artwork is, it's wonderful. And I thoroughly enjoy seeing the accomplishments. This time of year, it's a busy time, but I enjoy going to all these different events. Today, I was at the Dare graduation for Tinnicum, and those kids were so proud of themselves, and I just hope that they truly got something out of it and take it with them throughout their teenage years. It's just wonderful this time of year, seeing what has been accomplished. The junior prom was wonderful. I had the opportunity to attend it. Beautiful. Everybody was dressed nice, acted like ladies and gentlemen, and I'm looking forward to going to the senior prom. Once again, the senior prom, I'll be able to give you an update, a better update, but the after-prom, the parents, year after year after year, the wonderful job that they do, and I hope the kids say thank you because it's a lot of work. So with that said, congratulations to the parents and to the students for a job well done and the accomplishments that they have made this year. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Just a couple quick, quick comments. The MOU for cyber school, we're attempting to bring as much of the cyber school students, or as many of the cyber school students back to the district to prevent that money from leaving the school and going to other places. Because as Mrs. Floyd and others have said, sometimes it's even more costly to educate a student at some of these private cyber schools or charter schools. Another note, charter schools. It was reported that charter schools in Philadelphia donated over $7 million to the mayor's campaign. That's an important note because it tells you that there's a lot of big money trying to control how our children are educated, and, and it's for-profit money, and it's coming from big companies. It's not coming from the taxpayers. It is ultimately, but it's largely being driven by business. So we want to keep an eye on that and try to keep the focus on public education. Not that school choice is a bad thing, but it's got to be managed much the same way our public schools, managed and governed and tested much the same way our public schools are. And Keystone exams, I would continue to work to build grassroots movements to eradicate standardized testing. As everyone has said, it takes up way too much time for our students and our teachers, and it moves the focus from education to testing. We're tested enough all through our lives. I wanted to mention, we had a group put together spaghetti dinner for the track team recently. Forty or so wonderful students from the track team under Mr. McGrady attended the said spaghetti dinner. They were well behaved, had a good time, and politely cleaned up after themselves. There was nothing left to be done when they left, so I wanted to congratulate them on that. Another group of students put together a Delcade concert to raise funds for Kaibara. One of our teachers has been promoting soccer and sports programs in Kaibara, Africa, for some time, and is attempting to build a school there for women, for young ladies, and that was, that money went towards helping that. And last, we had, we did have two students receive recognition in an essay contest at Boeing for first and second place for their essay on how does science affect diversity. We had a student that won first place, as well as a student that won second place. They both received some compute, electronic gifts, as well as a paid internship for eight[1775.23] some compute, electronic gifts, as well as a paid internship for eight weeks for the summer. So, I wanted to congratulate them for that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments?
Mrs. Hager?
Yes, Mr. Eckert?
Tonight, we passed motion fourteen, which was the awarding of contracts for some of the projects going on over the summer. Before we meet again publicly, some of those projects will be starting right away. As soon as the students leave the building, the contractors will be coming in. I just want the public to be aware that the focus this year will be on the Prospect Park and Administration Building over there, so that area will be very busy to the neighbors. I want to thank them in advance for their patience with some of the activity going on over there this summer. And please, if you see something that you don't like, or you see something strange going on, or you're not happy, do not hesitate to call. We want your phone call. We want to hear what is going on that is bothering you. Not September, okay? Please. Don't come in September and say, "I had to put up with this all summer over in my neighborhood," all right? If you see something, please call. We will do everything that we can to satisfy your complaints, but we also, please remember, we only have a short amount of time to get a lot of work done at the same time. So, please, again, if you, if you have a problem, please call. Do not hesitate. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Eckert. Anyone else? On Monday, June first, two thousand fifteen, a finance committee meeting with a GBO meeting immediately following will be held at six o'clock P.M. in the boardroom of the Administration Building. Next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, June fifteenth, twenty fifteen, at six thirty P.M. The next regular monthly meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, June seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven P.M. Meetings adjourned. Good evening.